Good evening and welcome. Thank you for coming to tonight's candidate forum for the Red Wing City Council candidates. My name is Tina Langton and I am a member of the LWV Red Wing. The League of Women Voters Red Wing is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the active and informed involvement of citizens in the voting process. LWV Red Wing does not support or oppose political parties or individual candidates. We sponsor candidate forums to give voters the opportunity to hear and compare candidate stands on issues. Opinions expressed are of the candidates and not LWV Red Wing. Each candidate will have the following time limits. One and a half minutes for the opening statement and for the closing statement. Candidates' answers to each question will also be timed at one and a half minutes. A timekeeper will hold up a 30-second card and then a stop card to remind each candidate of their response time remaining. This event is being broadcast live on Red Wing's Channel 6 in its entirety without editing and will be available for viewing later. Consult the Channel 6 schedule for viewing times. Because this event is being photographed, recorded, and broadcast, by entering this event space or remaining at this event, you consent to be photographed or recorded. Please see the crowd release poster displayed by the entry door for more information. If you do not wish to be photographed or recorded, please do not remain at this event. The League of Women Voters Red Wing recognizes that personal devices like cell phones, cameras, and video recorders are commonplace. We ask that attendees silence personal devices. We also require that all attendees do not record this event. This also includes no live streaming. Any use of personal devices must not disrupt or distract others or obstruct the view of others. Any person who records this event or causes a distraction, disruption, or obstruction will be asked to leave or may be escorted from the event. Now, tonight's moderator, Jerry Olson, will begin the forum.
Thank you, Tina. Again, welcome and thank you for coming to tonight's candidate forum for the Red Wing City Council. My name is Jerry Olson and I will moderate tonight's forum. Carmen Erdelson was just here, but in the back, a member of the League of Women Voters is with me. Each candidate will be answering questions that they have not seen in advance. You, as the audience, will be encouraged and offered paper and pencils to submit your questions. When you have a question, just please raise your hand or raise the question high and wave them and one of the League members will pick them up. All questions are screened by a neutral League committee and questions will not be asked if they are illegible on a personal matter unrelated to the elective position, if they are unclear, inappropriately hostile, or submitted for the purpose of making a statement rather than gathering information. Questions may be edited and/or consolidated. Candidates have been given the agenda in advance of this forum and have agreed that they will be addressed by first name. They will give opening and closing statements. They will answer questions in rotation with the one-and-a-half-minute time limit and we encourage them all to address the audience as they speak. The candidates for tonight, and I should just mention that I'm going to introduce them in terms of the positions they're running for on the council. They are ordered in random order up here, so they are not in the order I'm introducing them. There are two at-large candidates, Ralph Rodakis and Laurel Stinson. Two candidates for wards one and two, one seat for those two wards, Stephanie Elson and Dean Hove. Ward three, Becky Norton and Ted Seifert. Ward four, Erin Buss and Burke Murphy. And again, thank you for coming and we'll begin with the candidates' opening statements. And again, the order of the candidates was chosen by random drawing earlier. So Erin, if you would begin with your opening statement.
Can everybody hear me? Oh, wow, that's loud. I'm Erin Buss. I'm running for ward four. I have three children who are not here because they decided to go and play Dungeons and Dragons instead of doing politics with mom, so I don't blame them. They attend Red Wing schools. I myself work at Sunnyside as a special education assistant and prior to that, I worked in hospitality and guest services training and as an events coordinator. The reason I'm running is because I want to make an impact in people's daily lives here in Red Wing. I want to make a difference and I want to get things done. I don't know about you, but I've been to many city council meetings where I notice tiptoeing around issues because they're too afraid to upset people. Well, let me tell you, I've already made waves in this town. I'm not afraid to upset people if it's for a good cause and representing Ward four is a great cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? A little bit closer, is that better? Thank you for coming and thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this event and giving us an opportunity to share. I am, again, Stephanie Elson, I'm from the area. I've lived in this area for more than 30 years. I've been an active community member and volunteer currently on the Port Authority. I've been a community education teacher. I've been a Girls on the Run coach, volunteered with my son's hockey team, volunteered with downtown Main Street. So even long before I was running for city council, I was very active in all those things. I've been at Red Wing Software as the marketing manager for 14 years and there are so many issues in Red Wing that I care about. Some of them are the housing, getting more affordable housing, more market rate housing, the continually growing drug problem that we have in our area, and the high cost of our healthcare here. Those are just some of the issues that I care about and I feel that a fresh face and fresh views could really help on the city council and that's why I'm running and I am committed to fixing things, solving problems, and moving Red Wing forward.
Thank you. Burke.
Good evening and thank you to the League and to everyone for being here and listening. I chose to live here over a year ago and every day I feel better and better about being here. It was not only the physical beauty of this place, of the bluffs and the buildings, but also something really compelling and that was the volunteerism and the participation in community events really blew me away. The high level of involvement and commitment to this community is really visible and palpable and it's why I feel hopeful and why I decided to jump in and run for city council. I bring years of experience as a small business owner, as an educator, as someone who's done economic and community development with workforce development and that experience, I think, will serve us moving forward. I'm also a senior and it was in part by joining the senior circuit class at the YMCA that I was encouraged to step up and run for city council. I'm especially reaching out tonight to Ward four, to my neighbors in Ward four, to step up and vote in this election, but also vote for me, for city council, for Ward four. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Laurel.
Hi, everyone. I'm Laurel Stinson. I'm running in the at-large race. I'm a resident of Ward four. I grew up in Red Wing and moved back here several years ago when I bought my house. I am really passionate about affordable housing and sustainability and our creative economy. I would like to say that I have a lot less government experience than some of the people up here and I consider that to be an asset in this race. I'm coming into this with fresh eyes and an open mind and I hope that you will do the same and consider voting for me as your at-large candidate in the city council race. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted.
Thank you to the League for hosting this and for the city staff for sponsoring it. My name's Ted Seifert. I've lived in Red Wing for 43 years. For 14 of those years, I was a Goodyear County Commissioner, so I'm very experienced and have a lot of contact with the government, both at the state and the federal level. I'm going to depart here in just a second because I want to ask and make sure somebody asks a question. I was surprised at the last meeting when the city set their preliminary levy on September 12th and then just by the 24th, found out that that levy wasn't going to work because of the $66 million that was going to be taken out of the XL ability to fund that. I was surprised that city council nor the administration seemed to be aware of that. Took them quite by surprise. So I'm wondering what plans are being made for when that plant ultimately closed down or if one of those units should close down even a little bit early. So I hope somebody writes a question regarding that. I'm a tax hawk. I will do my best to make sure that you pay less taxes. I'm more concerned, once we get past a city's or a government unit's safety, thanks, making sure that the community's safe, than I'm more concerned about your budget on your table rather than the budget at city council and make sure that your budget works and not necessarily the city council's. I'm Ted Seifert. Please vote for me on November 6th.
Thank you. Becky.
Thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters, and thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I appreciate you taking your time out of your night to be civically involved. I appreciate it. I've been in Red Wing for 13 years and I have a 12-year-old son who is a seventh grader at Twin Bluff Middle School and he's been going to school here the whole time and he's had great experiences, so that definitely has tied me to the community. I currently teach eighth through 12th grade science at River Bluff Education Center. That's the new building across from the high school. It's a great place to be. I teach all subjects of science, so that teaches me how to analyze a lot of information and process things and some of those students are really, they're fantastic individuals and I've really learned a lot of skills on how to remain calm and be really calm in their space when they're upset from something that's going on in the day and I know that I can bring that to city council. I've also been the associate dean at Minnesota State College Southeast Technical and that's also brought me a lot of information and skills on how to be an effective leader, how to work with a large budget, and how to make decisions in a large institution. I've been involved in the community for a lot of years. Actually, just shortly after I moved here, within about a year, I started working on the community gardens and then just got really civically involved and that has led me to see a lot of opportunities and ways that I could be involved in this community. And so when this vacancy came up, I was really inspired to see if I could, to get involved in that way and I've been really enjoying it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ralph.
Yes, thank you, the League of Women Voters, and thank you, Jerry, for moderating this tonight. I've been living in Red Wing here now for 32 years. My wife and I, Mary, moved here back in 1986. We raised our family here. My children still live here. I've got three grandkids living in the city as well, so I've got a lot of investor, invested into this community. I've got 13 years of experience in the planning commission, the Port Authority, city council, so a lot of experience in the civic arena, but I also have a lot of experience in the private arena. I've got 38 years in working in high-tech manufacturing. I'm on the management team there, really involved in finances and budgeting and whole human resources and personnel issues. I find it's important that we have people on the council who are knowledgeable and experienced in local government. I've been involved in not only local government here, I've been involved with the League of Minnesota Cities and the National League of Cities, so I've done a lot of things that really make me well positioned to represent the citizens of the cities, so I thank you.
Thank you. Dean.
Alrighty. I'm Dean Hove and I'd really like to thank the League of Women Voters. This is really a great forum. I enjoy doing this one every four years lately. Anyway, my campaign is basically about the same as it has been over the years: lower taxes, wise spending, a very strong public safety, and truly listening to the people. I would like everyone to remember, you can fight City Hall, just call me. Helping people is the best part of this job. That's the number-one thing that I really enjoy about this job and if I'm re-elected, I will continue to truly listen and work for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the first question and Stephanie Elson, you'll start the answers to this and if any of the candidates want me to repeat the question, please ask. Otherwise, we'll just move from one to the other in your answers, so beginning with Stephanie. What is your position on an ordinance regarding raising of chickens in the city?
Wow. I thought I did a lot of research for this event. Wasn't expecting the chickens. I will tell you what I know about the raising of chickens, but it's not very much, so I will tell you this. If the issue came up while I was on the council, I would research it. From what I know, they could be a safety, I mean, they could be a health hazard if people don't keep the area clean, but I can't really answer too well on that. I hate to say it. I know a lot of, it's been increasing desire for people to have chickens so they can have their own eggs. For that reason, I think it would be nice for people to be able to do that, to have their own chickens raised, you know, get their own eggs. Yeah, wow. Oh, God.
Thank you. Burke.
Actually, thank you for the question because people in Ward four have brought that up with me when I've been door-knocking, so I have investigated it. And there really is a very strong health component and what they've brought to my attention is that they're interested not just for the eggs, but because chickens eat ticks and Red Wing has a very high incidence of Lyme's disease due to ticks and a whole range of Lyme's diseases due to ticks. And so as somebody who loves to garden, who has two dogs, who like to romp in my backyard, I wouldn't mind having some chickens to protect me and my dogs from ticks. I have been told that it's an ordinance that may be immovable, but I would really love to revisit this and to talk about it because Lyme's disease has tremendous gravity on people's health and well-being and if it's as simple as having chickens in a fenced-in yard, that seems like an easy solution. So I hope that we can revisit it on the council. I think it's a really good idea. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Laurel.
Yeah, I agree with Burke. I think that chickens would be a good addition to Red Wing for those reasons. Obviously, there are always concerns when something like that is considered and the ordinance would have to be written to, you know, take those things into account and take into account people's concerns for the reasons against it, but I am in favor of it. Thank you.
Ted.
I wouldn't have a problem with an ordinance for folks to raise chickens as long as it was meant simply to buy the family and wasn't a commercial operation and that there were a few safeguards to make sure that these chickens were contained and corralled and not causing any hazards.
Becky.
I've also heard about this topic in the community and I know that some of the other communities, such as Northfield and some of the more urban communities, are already allowing these ordinance to happen with chickens without roosters. And so I definitely would like to see this brought forward and for us to be having that conversation. I like the points that Burke brought up as well about the safety, the health benefits of it and I think we would all benefit from some more organic gardening and eating nutritious eggs. They're packed full of some things, so I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to talk about this and see it happen here in Red Wing.
Ralph.
Yeah, I know other cities have looked into this and I think we should be looking at other cities for our model ordinance and see how we can adapt some of our ordinances to theirs. Red Wing's an interesting city. It's 43 square miles and so there are a lot of parcels, a lot of lots out there which are much larger and could accommodate, you know, small animals, small farm animals. There are some concerns about lot size, so that would really need to be taken into account: noise concerns, neighbor concerns, so I think there's a lot of other communities that we can be learning from as well.
Dean. Well, every two years, this question comes up and the biggest issue I have with, it isn't about having the chickens, it isn't about the health risks or anything like that, it's that every ordinance that we, and we have researched this extensively over the last 10, 15 years, it puts neighbor against neighbor and that's the basic thing that I disagree with, okay? Every one of those ordinance that we looked at says, okay, every neighbor around you has to give you their permission to raise chickens and if one doesn't, then you can't raise chickens, okay? So now we're putting neighbor against neighbor, we're causing a problem that we shouldn't have had in the first place. So right now, unless that can get resolved, I would not support having chickens.
Erin.
Hi, I'm very familiar with chickens, having spent five years of my life collecting eggs from over a dozen chickens on my parents' farm off of Highway 19. And for all the reasons that Burke stated, I'm a definite fan of chickens. I have looked into this. I believe it was Brooklyn Park passed an ordinance where it wasn't all of your neighbors had to agree to you having chickens, it was a certain percentage and I think that would be a fair compromise if you can get a certain percentage of your neighbors to support your chicken habit. You could probably bribe them with eggs, but whatever ordinance we've passed, no roosters, please. Roosters are mean and loud, so thank you.
Thank you. The next question, and Burke, you will be answering this first and we'll go around, changing gears. What is your plan for the city to be able to accommodate the loss of tax base created by the closure of the XL plant? I assume we're talking about the nuclear power plant.
Did you position that as what is my plan or what is my strategy?
The question was, what is your plan for the city to be able to accommodate the loss of tax base created by the closure of the XL plant? And I assume it's the XL nuclear plant at Prairie Island they're talking about.
Thank you for the question. I don't have a plan, but I have researched this and have been attending city council budget workshops and other events to become more informed. I do believe that it's unfortunate that there hasn't been a plan in place a lot sooner to head off the kind of impact this was going to have on increased taxes for the residents and the commercial businesses here. I do believe there should be a clean energy strategy for the city of Red Wing for the transitional care off of the dependence on the nuclear power plant and its tax base and I think that there are a lot of great ideas in the marketplace to support that. We have been watched by various organizations who are interested in contributing to a plan. We've watched as a city who has to be downsizing their nuclear power plant to develop support systems for transition to solar and wind and subsidizing the nuclear power that we have now. And I don't know that they would equal the kinds of money that we have been awarded from XL Energy, but I think that there are a lot of educated, informed people, successful businesses in the clean energy market that can help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurel.
Yeah, I agree that investment in more clean energy businesses in Red Wing would be a good strategy and also I feel like investing in more in our creative economy and the arts economy that's already an asset we have here in Red Wing is also a good strategy towards that. Using the creative people and the technical knowledge and the arts spirit that is already in existence in Red Wing and that we've been fostering to create new businesses that will create new tax bases for us here in Red Wing, I think is a strong strategy moving forward. And also, there are probably a lot of other ideas on the table that I would be willing to consider in addition to those ideas to try to keep us strong and healthy moving forward into the future. Thank you.
Ted.
I think many of these answers don't really get at the $20 million levy and when we lose a significant portion of taxable property, all of a sudden, levying those dollars is going to fall more heavily on everybody else. If I run the council, I would have a strategy that would begin to downsize the city government. I know that because we're collecting a lot more dollars right now, we're doing a lot of projects and as those projects get done, we need to take a look at how big a government do we need? Do we need all the capital equipment, all the machinery, all the employees we have? And we don't want to pink slip employees, so we need to take a look at it now. In just 13 years, one of those units is scheduled to shut down and so we need to be looking at how do we downsize the government to fit the community that will be here. There are 700 jobs involved in this. Now, maybe some of them will stay, but, you know, many of them will leave. But even more than that, those are old units, they will, they're constantly under inspection. There's certainly things that could go wrong with them. Let's say that nuclear regulatory says you've got to fix that problem and XL says that'll cost millions of dollars and things only got about four more years of life. We're not going to fix it, we're shutting it down now. You just lost half that tax base right there. Are you ready for it?
Becky.
Thank you. I think that the city needs to be smart about its spending at all times and we're doing that this year, looking at the tax levy for 2019 and looking at where cuts can be made and trim off any of that fat that actually is pretty trim right now. I think in a lot of ways, as Ted said, we're utilizing a lot of that tax levy, that base of XL Energy, to work on some infrastructure repairs that we have the opportunity to do that a lot of communities don't have because of our strong relationship with XL Energy and I like how the city has been leveraging that tax base to do that. I do think it's obvious that we need to have a really clear and solid partnership with XL Energy and the nuclear plant there so that we can be in communication about their direction. They have a heavy investment in their infrastructure here. I think that with a lot of partnership, we can look to the future. As Burke said, there is a lot of opportunities with green energies. We have a two-year community college here in town. I'd love to see that community college partner with us as well. I think they're looking for opportunities. We have a lot of residents here that don't want to uproot their families, so there's a lot of reasons for all of us to work together to look to that future. XL knows it's coming, we know it's coming. We can plan for that and make those cuts at a nice and steady rate and not make them preemptively, but make them in a strategical manner and I think we can do that in a strategic manner.
Ralph.
Yes, the XL nuclear plant has been a major part of discussions with the council over the last 20, 30 years. Their current licenses expire in 15, 16 years, so it's not that far out. One of the things we looked at, two years ago when I was on the council, we looked at, having discussions with other communities. We're not the first one to be going through this. Manitowoc over in Wisconsin has gone through this recently. We need to be going and understanding, working with them, understanding what they've done to help them get through that crisis as well. Here locally, we're looking at, we need to be diversifying our economics as well. That's truly what was going to get us through. Ted mentioned that they have a lot of employees there. A lot of the employees don't live in this town, though. A lot of their employees live in Hastings and the cities. But that plant will be shut down at some point if they get another license or not, so at some point they will shut down. So we need to be focusing on our city budget, shrinking our budget as we can. We shrunk it back in 2008, 2009 when we took a major hit on our LGA from the state. And so we've done it before. We're looking at 10% cut in our levy for this next year, 10 or so. So we just need to manage the capital expenditures that we're doing now for all the deferred maintenance we're doing and really work on a phase-out of those capital expenditures to meet when the licensing, the nuclear plant comes to fruition.
Dean.
Okay, I'm going to agree with everything he said, so I don't have to say that over again. Some of the other things that, because the city has been looking at this for quite some time and this is no big news to anybody, that they're going to close down. The fact that they could suddenly just close down next year, that's not even really possible in the scenario that Ted was talking about. Really what this is about, if something like that would happen, it would still take seven years to close it and in seven years, we're going to be halfway to their closing anyway. I don't think they're sticking in a new elevator or, excuse me, a new generator this year to close down in three or four years because that would just be a- this year to close down in three or four years, because that would just be a, a waste of money. They're a for-profit company and their, their, their stockholders would go crazy. Anyway, but we have been looking at this, and even when they do close down in two thousand and thirty-four, there's still gonna be a tax base there, okay? And part of the, and I wanna go on to what some of the other candidates said, some of the things that we're already doing, our industry is, is getting busier, and that's created a housing market, and so by adding extra industry, extra jobs, extra housing, shrinking our ta, that'll in, enlarge our tax base, and part of, part of the rest of it would be, I would agree that we would have to cut down some on our, our budget.
Thank you. Erin.
Well, I think, we have a lot of really great ideas on how to deal with this issue. I also believe there's, there's a little bit of chicken little scenario here, the sky is falling and we're, we're not gonna have any money. Look in this room, not all of us depend on XL. We all live and work and shop here. Some of us commute, but I bet you still stop that quick trip on your way out of town. So it's, our tax base is not going completely away, and it sounds like we have a lot of creative individuals here, ready to tackle the problem, and have been tackling the problem for the last umpteen years. So, I, I think we'll be okay, I think we can figure this out. Thank you.
Stephanie.
Yeah, there are, there have been a good, a lot of good comments already. What I would say is, as I've been going around and talking to people, there's a giant concern about this. Some people said they're actively, you know, they're, they're wondering what's gonna happen, they're, you know, should I sell my house now? I mean, it's, it's sixteen years away. But what I would like to see is an actual plan that people could look at and contribute to, so they could feel better knowing something is being done. And so the community could know, hey, look, we have this plan. Here it is, see? You can give feedback, you can, so that's the first thing I would like to see for myself, is what is the plan? What's Plan A? What's, sixteen years is a long ways away, so you can't just have one plan, you have to have a Plan A, and a Plan B, and a Plan C. And I think it would be a good idea to put something together and, you know, keep looking at it every year as time goes on and as things change and update it. I just think it would make a lot of people in this community feel better. But also in addition to that, things like, things that can help increase our tax base are getting the property over there on Highway nineteen that we just met about last night, the Port Authority and the council together. Getting that, just aggressively working to get that place filled with the kind of place we want, manufacturing, light manufacturing, you know, with, let's just say a hundred employees, so we can get that tax base, get that going long before those sixteen years are up. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes that question, and we'll go on to the next question, which, Laurel, you'll answer first. How will you solicit and share your constituents' views on issues facing the city?
Well, I intend to solicit my constituents' views in all the ways that usually happen when you're elected to the city council, through your email address and your phone. People can always call you, and I am the secretary at First Lutheran Church, and I fully expect that people will walk in the door all day, every day, while I'm sitting at my desk and tell me their concerns. And as far as sharing them with others, I also have seen other candidates using the community forums on Facebook to discuss issues with people and their concerns and questions. I think those are great ways to connect with people in the community. A lot of Red Wing residents are on Facebook and use those forums. And I intend to take into account all of the opinions I hear and share those with other council members in the open meetings, like you do. And I think that that won't really be a big problem for me, as far as what I've heard from people, I think that they'll be comfortable talking to me. Thanks.
Okay.
You know, there's this plethora of communications, whether it's by phone or by email, you know, Twitter, or call me at work, all those numbers, all that information is out there. I'm about town most of the time, I would certainly be here at all council meetings, and so everybody could have access to, to contact me and tell me what their concerns were. I'm a good listener, I always have an opportunity to, to have some conversation with somebody about a problem and so on, and many times, you know, there's, there's some solution there, something that they didn't know or something that I didn't know.
Becky.
Thank you. Yeah, the obvious ones, as, that haven't been mentioned, phone and email, and I've already, as, being a candidate and also being seated on city council, I'm already hearing from residents, and so that seems really comfortable and familiar, I feel like I'm really approachable to, to those in the community. Phone and email has been working out the best, and Facebook Messenger, as Laura mentioned. I think that social media does play a role in getting out information and being connected. I think that there's a little bit of a limit to, to the effectiveness of that role as well. But I think obviously, as well as attending community events, city council meetings, but there's a lot of events that happen in this town, and I'm pretty active and involved in those, so I've already been able to meet people at, like, the two thousand and forty planning sessions, attending some of the workshops, attending some of the things, events like in the library footroom. So I think having a presence in the community is really important to a council member, and I definitely already have that, and, and welcome anybody to, to approach me at any of those things. And out in the public, at the grocery store, I heard is a common place, so I'll see, I'll see people there as well, and in neighborhoods as well, so.
Ralph.
Uh, yes, thank you. I believe local government really works best when there's a two-way communication between the council, elected council members and the community. We can't be preaching to you, you'd also need to be, feedback to us. And beyond email and phones and all this communications, one of the best ways is really to use our board and commission process. A good, open, public process, really, we've done a lot in the past, a good, open process gives you good results, in my mind. And so encouraging people to communicate with the other community members at, in planning commission, human rights commissions, that is so important. That's really where a lot of these ideas can kinda gel together, and that's really where council, as council member, we really rely on our board and commissions to bring those recommendations. They do a lot of the elect work and research on, on topics, and it's so important that they bring their view to the council and the elected officials. So, thank you.
Dean.
You know, I like all the, the normal telephones, emails. Everybody does that. But I'm gonna agree with Becky, I get ninety percent of my really good information from walking around Walmart to the grocery store. You run into everybody, all walks of life are there. And, and I'm telling you, some of my best ideas have come from the people, all of my good ideas come from the people. I try to do exactly what they, they want me to do, that's what I'm elected for. But really, that's where I get a lot of, people, people call quite frequently, but walking around Menards, walking around, you know, out in the grocery stores, out in Walmart, people just come right up to you, hey, I got a good idea for you, or hey, what's, I have a concern for you. That's really what I like. I mean, one-on-one talking to people, or, you know, as my wife says, she'll go grocery shopping after by herself when we, when we get to the store, because there's usually two or three people that I'm talking to. And then when she's to checkout, she says, okay, I'm ready. But that's really, that's preferable for me. I, I, I do some of my best, best listening in social places like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin.
I think there's only so many ways we can communicate. I'm also available through email, phone, social media, community events, out and about town. I, I can't walk through a Target or through the library without, you know, five or six kids waving, hi, Miss Bus, and so I'm, I'm pretty available out and about. I would like to do something similar to what Mayor Dous does with the, the coffee with the mayor. If you know me, you know I always have the coffee. And so I'd love to get together with you over a cup of coffee sometime. Thanks.
Stephanie.
Could you repeat the question?
How will you solicit and share your constituents' views on issues facing the city?
So, I, I do, I guess I'd take the question a little bit differently, but I, I am available via all the normal methods, phone, email, Facebook, I'm, I look at the pages at night and everything. But I think the person asked the question, how will you share their views with the council? And so I'm just gonna answer a little bit differently. So I think the question, you know, depends on what the issue is. If the issue is safety, then, you know, I would contact someone who would represent that. If the, if the, if the question that they had refers to something that's being discussed at the council, I would probably talk to the council president and address it that way. I think it just depends, but I'm a very communicative and open person as well. I think people find me very approachable, and so I'm good at follow-up, I, I wouldn't just let something slide or ignore, so, yeah. That's it.
Burke.
Thank you for the question. You know, before I became a professional in economic development, I cut hair for many years, and that requires what I would call results-based listening skills. And the fact that the majority of my clients stayed with me for twenty years is a heartening form of success. And so I, I appreciate Stephanie's clarification about this, about how I would share what I heard from community with, with the council. And I would do due diligence to research their concerns and to try and find a, an approachable way to share that information with my colleagues. I would want it to be open and accessible as a concern that came to me from my ward or the community at large. And as other people have said, you know, I shop locally, I'm in lines, I like to talk to people in lines, and I'm a very open and accessible listener. So I, I, I don't think that that would be a challenge, I hope it wouldn't be a challenge, and I believe that's what city council members are here for, to hear what members of the community have to say and carry those concerns to this forum. Thank you.
We'll move on to the next question, and Ted, you will go first on this question. How do we manage economic development while maintaining Red Wing's strong, small-town heritage?
I think the, the small-town heritage should certainly help our economic development, because people are looking for employees for most businesses, and the employees have to have someplace where they would like to live. So as we try to, to entice more jobs and industry to come to town, we, we do need to make Red Wing a, a very enticing place to live, and I think it already is, and we'll try to main, maintain that. I've talked about the need for, for market-rate housing, because our employers can't find enough employees in the city. I've talked about using TIF as, as an incentive to get private industry to build more housing. I think that would, that would work. So as we, as we expand our, our economy and our industry here, we have both the people that are already here providing better housing, and the people coming for better jobs, and the employers coming for a better workforce, so I think that all works well together.
Becky.
Could I have you repeat the question, please?
How do we manage economic development while maintaining Red Wing's strong, small-town heritage?
Thank you. I think that the first answer is that, as most city councils approach us very strategically, that's the obvious answer. I think that the Port Authority meeting last night, the workshop, really talked a lot about the strategies behind the growth and development in areas such as the Highway nineteen and sixty-one that Stephanie already mentioned as well in an earlier question. I think that Red Wing also has a really good grasp of strategic planning, for example, working with the two thousand and forty plan. That's a really great way for the city, city to start looking at some ideas and some options, and putting some ideas and options out there, and then getting that information out to the community to hear what's most important to the community members. So throughout the summer, there were a lot of those two thousand and forty strategic plan sessions in a lot of the parks, looking at specifically how those parks were gonna be used and growing, and I think we use that same approach with our economic development as well. There's obviously a large draw for a lot of, a lot of community members to see some growth and development down by the waterfront, down by levy, and extending out to Old West Main. So I think that the best way is to be really strategic about that, what kind of growth and development do we want? And, and we've been able to put some parameters around that, again, like we have with the, the Highway nineteen and sixty-one area out there. I think there's some, some parameters that will help us to be really strategic and keep our small-town characteristics and, and be, and grow in the, the right way, right size our growth, and sustain the, the beautiful historic town that we have, so.
Ralph.
Yeah, the way we manage economic development here is, is a little bit unique, we, we've got the opportunity within our city to bring a little more high-tech. We've got HPC here who have put fiber to the home, large-capacity fiber, internet's kind of things. So the, the, the higher-tech businesses, the small businesses, it really will be our focus. We don't have the landmass to bring in a large five-hundred-person corporation, so we'll be focusing on those smaller businesses that really will be, can be geared towards downtown, can also be used, the Highway nineteen property, which is really is only about eighteen acres or so. But the primary piece that we really need to focus on as a council is really the workforce and workforce housing. Everything we've talked about in the last number of years, those are the key issues. Employers wanna come here, they wanna make sure they have a place for the employers, employees to, to live, and there's just isn't not very much of that here. So working with our, our local housing developers, making sure they have the right employees so they can actually build, well, that's one of their concerns, that they can't find employees even to build homes. So we, we should be working with our local college to make sure we have the right type of workforce here and to bring in those businesses.
Dean.
Actually, I think we're doing some of that now. If you, if you're, if you're looking at the downtown, and I'm gonna use Blue Trading as a, as a, an example, that was an absolute perfect fit for downtown, okay? Right next to the Red Wing Shoe Outlet. I would definitely agree, we need housing, we need housing desperately. I would, you know, controlling, I don't wanna control industry, I wanna see industry come into Red Wing in the right zoning or expand, and I think they're willing to do that. We've had some expanses, well, three M is a good example, but you still have to have the housing for the workers, and that is, that's one of our biggest issues right now. Matter of fact, we, it's coming up on Monday night's agenda, you know, that we're looking at two hundred and fifty or thereabouts, up to two hundred and fifty housing units on city property. So, and it would also be, we'd utilize the TIF to, to build those housing, that housing. And it's with a local builder, so those jobs are gonna be local, which is really a big, big thing, because we haven't had local builders building housing like this for many, many, many years, since the late, or early eighties, I think was the last one that was built. Otherwise, it's always been out-of-town people. Oh, time's up. Thank you.
Erin.
I agree with Dean and Ralph that we do need to have more housing available. I'm a renter, so I'm, I'm sensitive to that issue, and, and the more housing we have available, I think will make the, the cost of renting a little more competitive, and so people will have more money to spend in, in the area. And I know I'll probably upset some people, but I think we do need to encourage downtown to be open on Sundays. We have, we have a lot of people that come to town as tourists, and this is the ideal season to be open on Sundays. The leaves will be, the leaves will be, you know, peaking soon, and I can't tell you how often I've, I've been walking and, and tourists are saying, why isn't anything open? You know, I, I, you know, I, I don't check out, or I checked out at noon and I thought I'd do some shopping, and nothing's open. So if there's an incentive for local business owners to be open on Sunday, I would support that, and also supporting the Sheldon, the First Friday events, the Dig in Old West Main events, enhancing our, our nightlife in town is, is definitely a priority. Otherwise, people leave town and they spend their money in Minneapolis. Thank you. So, thank you.
Stephanie?
Yeah, I, this whole subject is near and dear to my heart because I absolutely love the charm of Red Wing. And when I travel for work and for fun, if people know Red Wing, they get this look in their eye that's magical, and they say, "Oh, Red Wing, oh, Red Wing," and they're, you know, they love it. And I feel the same way, and so do probably, so does probably everyone here. So, I think what makes Red Wing a small, you know, what gives it its charm is its small-town character, the downtown, the Old West Main Street, the Bluff. I think we need to continue with things like about, I don't know what it was, five years ago, downtown Main Street had a program where they brought in, there were some empty buildings, and they brought in some, they got, well, there was a winner, but we ended up having three new businesses come in because of that, and I thought that was an excellent effort. So, I think we need to continue working with downtown Main Street for programs like that, work with the Port Authority, get more of those downtown buildings filled. The Old West Main Street is being renewed, which is great, and that will help the whole effort as well. Continuing to do things like they're going to be doing with the Bluff, upgrading that so people can continue to enjoy it. Many people come from out-of-town to go to the Bluff. So, I think we need to, and then one other thing is for the businesses, the small businesses that are, you know, in our community, we need to make sure we keep the business taxes low enough for them to keep surviving. Thank you.
Burke?
Thank you. Well, I have an eye to the future with a clear recollection and respect for the past, and I love small-town life. But the question for me is what kind of growth and development will keep us competitive in 21st-century economy? And number one, what comes to mind is strategies to retain our young people, and that means providing really competitive education so that they can fill the jobs that our companies need to grow, and that we will attract new businesses, small and large, to develop and grow our economy. I think we need to take a balanced approach to economic development that's supporting local businesses and services, serving the local people, and attracting tourism. I really think that Erin made some great points about the need to have a more vital, vibrant economy to serve the people that are coming here in the fall particularly because Red Wing is an iconic location. I think that we have some great opportunities to develop, but it's important to be serving the local people and not necessarily just be looking at a tourist economy. And finally, I think we need to continue to showcase the incredible creative economy that's here, and that includes Red Wing Shoes and Rydell Shoes, as well as the Anderson Center and Art Reach, and as well as the Depot Gallery and the Glory of the Sheldon. We have a lot to celebrate.
Laurel?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of that about our arts economy, and I think that Red Wing is already doing a lot of the right things as far as investing in our infrastructure and making sure that the historic character of our town is maintained and maintaining it at a steady rate and not letting things decay. I think that that has been a good thing that I've seen already from our council. And also, like Burke said, I'm less interested in attracting people from out-of-town as I am in serving the people who are already here and have already invested in Red Wing. I'd like to see more investment in educational opportunities for our community and for people to develop their own ideas into new businesses and to develop the businesses they've already started here in Red Wing into larger and providing more services and jobs to our community as well.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question, and this will be directed first to Becky. With county sales tax, school referendum, and city taxes, what is your position on city spending? What items would you cut, or what would you add and why?
That's an important question this year. So, the city council is well aware of the school referendum, and I think, I guess I'll speak for myself only on city council, but we wanna make sure that it's affordable place for everybody to live. And so, it's my understanding as well that the city council several years ago made a pledge to the community to not raise the tax rate above the rate of inflation, and I really like that the city council made that commitment and is working really hard to honor that. Obviously, it's a really hard year, as has been mentioned. There were some changes to Excel Energy's tax base, so that has hit us pretty hard. We're taking a lot of time looking at the taxes and asking the city staff to review areas where things can be cut. There are some things that may have to get delayed or put off a year if those, if the cost of those won't be as great. So, I think specifics, there are a couple of items that I've looked at on the city council budget that I would take a look at, but I'm gonna hang, hold off on that until we can have that conversation as a collective group in city council. I know that there are places that we have to make some of those hard cuts, and we'll be able to do that. I think that we're sitting pretty well and that we have a little bit of a fund balance, and we'll continue to make it as affordable of a place to live as we can and to respect that, all of those pressures on the residents here.
Thank you. Ralph?
Yes, back in 2009 to 2010, the state imposed some significant cuts on us through LGA cuts, and so we actually cut the city budget by about 20%. We reduced headcount by 11% at that time. And then the strategy after that, that we've been following the last eight years or so is really, is to maintain an operational budget that was fairly flat and take the extra dollars that we're getting from Excel and invest that into our capital expenses. We had a lot of, during that time when we had those major cuts, there's a lot of deferred maintenance and other things that we're just, we're not keeping up with. So, we're using those capital dollars to really reinvest in our infrastructure. You've been seeing that throughout the city over the last number of years. We're at a tipping point now where we need to start phasing those out and completing those major projects before the Excel tax rate changes significantly. So, by keeping the operational budget flat and reducing our capital expenses in the next couple of years, we'll be able to reduce our budget, you know, at least by 10%, hopefully next year and the following years going from there as well.
Dean?
Part of that plan that Ralph was talking about also anticipated something like this happening. We talked about it extensively at many workshops, and it really, the plan is working, but we already anticipated something like this eventually may happen. So, but my idea, and I've already talked to a lot of people, and that's here again, I'm gonna go back to, I really wanted to hear from the people, so I started making some phone calls, and then I got talked to at many different stores. We came home with a lot less groceries one night because of it. But anyway, I really wanna hear from the people, and I think the council needs to hear from the people and what they would like to get cut, because it's, this last one is much smaller than what we had to cut originally. But if we hear from the people, we'll get a much better idea on which project, because it really could come down to just maybe one project that needs to be cut or deferred for a year. I think my time's up again.
Thank you. Aaron?
Can you repeat the question?
With county sales tax, school referendum, and city taxes, what is your position on city spending? What would you cut, or what would you add and why?
All right. Well, I've been working in the school district for the last five years, and so I've seen some of the creative ideas that we've implemented to cut down on spending, and some of those, I'm sure, are applicable to the city. But I also think we need to look at the 2040 Plan to see what residents see as a priority and what maybe is something that we shouldn't be so focused on. As a mom with three kids, I do know how to budget, and I'm willing to dig into our budget and see what we can let go and what we can put off. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I will just say that I will agree with what Ralph said. Infrastructure projects are important, and they have to happen, but completing them will be good and will help. As Becky said, there's a healthy fund balance, and that will help for this year. I think ongoingly, one thing we can look at is making sure that things that we plan as far as, you know, special projects, big projects, are these things that we need? Are these things that will benefit us? And look at each, every project that comes by us and say, you know, "Do we wanna spend this much? What will this give us in return for our money?" I think that's something we need to look at ongoingly. And in addition to that, for special projects, what is this costing us every year? How much are we gonna be paying every year on maintenance on this project? And I think that is a concern we need to look at as well.
Burke?
Thank you. It seems that we are at a tipping point with the operational budget, but it also sounds like a lot of preparation has been taking place to prepare for the tough decisions ahead. I would look at the data and review our goals in the 2040 Plan and determine with the help of my colleagues as well as feedback from the community as to what was realistic and in the best interest of businesses as well as residents in terms of the tough cuts that might have to be made. I certainly wouldn't wanna have to choose funding support for the homeless versus other vulnerable people, and I hope it doesn't come down to that. I know that tough decisions are ahead, but I really think that we need to look inward and make sure that our spending as a city is reined in and appropriate, and then look at what do we need to do to continue to develop the economy here so that we can continue to grow our tax base and have a viable resource to support the growth in the future of this city.
Thank you. Laurel?
Yeah, I agree with, you know, what everybody has said about the need for cuts to the budget and also with what Stephanie specifically said about having to evaluate each project on its own merits and how much benefit it brings to the community as opposed to how much we're spending on it. But to answer the other half of the question that nobody's really touched on, if I had the opportunity to spend more money on something, I would choose the library. I would like to see our public library have expanded hours. I know a lot of students here in town do their studying in the evenings after sports practices at Caribou Coffee, and I think a lot of them would rather be at the library if it was open and they could be there. And I think the library has already been doing a great job with programming for people of all ages, and I would like to invest more in that. I think it's a great asset to our community and to its economic development to have that asset where people can go to learn and research and study and have meetings and all of those good things that the library provides for our community.
Ted?
With the budget items that run to 152 pages, $20 million or more to work with, certainly, if we needed to cut the budget, we'd be able to find stuff. Now, I know that everything is near and dear to somebody's heart, and they say, "Oh, don't cut that." So, in some cases, you have to have the wisdom of Solomon to say, you know, what's gonna go and what's going to stay. But I think it's always better to run a lean government rather than a fat government. So, if you get into a bind with your finances, you're not going to have to do a layoff. Rather, you have always had plenty of work ahead and not enough employees to do it, so you're always running lean. For some people who say, you know, "We would gladly pay more taxes so that the city could have this or that," and some people are in the position to do that, but they don't realize that others in the community aren't in the position to do that taxing. And I'd say to those people who say, "Yeah, I could afford that," that you just write a, you know, just write a check to the city, you know, do that, make a contribution, it's tax-free. And I'm serious about that. While somebody else is trying to put food on the table for their three kids and then get, you know, other things for their kids, they just can't afford it. So, private donations would work great. Run a lean government. What I did when I was commissioner, and people said, "What are you doing for the school?" I said, "Well, I try to keep our county budget as low as possible, our tax as low as possible, so if you need to make a decision about a city, a school levy, you have room to do that. You can't just say, 'We're overtaxed, we gotta vote no,' even if they need it." You could have some leeway on doing that.
Thank you. Becky? No, you started this, I'm sorry. I knew that was gonna happen at some point.
Give me a second chance.
We'll move on to the next question, and we'll start with Ralph. So, we had several questions about city staff, city council as staff, city staff relationships and teamwork, and so we're wrapping these all into this one. The council has been without a full representation for months. How would you work with your fellow members and the city staff and city officials to maintain a positive working relationship ensuring all residents are guaranteed representation? Read that one more time. The council has been without representation for months. How would you work with your fellow members, council members, the city staff, and city officials to maintain positive working relationships, ensuring all residents are guaranteed good representation?
Thank you for the question. Really gets back to the respect. Council members really need to understand their role, and city staff, they understand their role as well. Council really is there to provide guidance and policy direction to the city staff, and the city staff will be executing those on a day-to-day basis. But it's really some mutual respect. There will be disagreements and challenges ahead of us, but working through those agreements and trying to understand, to me, instead of getting upset and mad, you know, what council members need to be doing is advocating for their position, doing a thorough debate, doing the research, trying to convince other council members to take a position that they agree on, then being able to move back if you're in the minority, you know, accept the majority. It's the council as a whole that makes decisions, not individual council members. So, if people remember that and can respect the council, the council members and the city staff, city staff spend a lot of time bringing recommendations to the council and educating the council members. They're professionals in their own right, and they need to be respected for that.
Dean?
I just gotta say, I'm very thankful that we had those special elections, and Ralph and Becky got elected, because there for a long, for a while, the city council couldn't even really talk to each other. When there's four people, three is a quorum. It's not fun. So, but I guess I've never really had a problem talking, you know, I don't have a problem talking to council members, I don't have a problem talking to the staff. Maybe I just get along with everybody. I have not had that problem. I think that everybody should be listening to the other person, seeing it out of their eyes, what they really feel and what they see. And then, when you can see both sides of it, you make the decision. I do agree that once a decision is made, though, that the entire council should back it. It's, and it's happened to me several times, but where I didn't support something, but we voted, and I got voted down, and you know what? To this day, I still support those efforts because that's what the council chose to do. The council votes as a whole body, and it's, the majority rules. So, I think just being respectful and talking things out is the best way to handle this. That's all I can say, 'cause that's all I've ever done.
Aaron?
Hi. I work at an elementary school in special education. So, every week, I work collaboratively with a classroom teacher, a case manager, a music teacher, a FIAD teacher, a STEM teacher, an art teacher, a librarian, a social worker, not to mention our occupational therapist, our physical therapist, our speech therapist. And I do this every week, and we work together every week for the good of our students. And I think we can apply that to city council as well. We all have a different part to play, but if we work together, we can get things done. And this is what I do for a living, so I find it pretty easy to get along with people. And I can apply that here on city council. Thank you.
Stephanie?
I'm gonna do something like...
I'm going to do something like Erin did and use a comparison from my own life, and that is, two years ago, we revamped a 700-page website and we made it mobile-friendly. And I do the writing and I do the optimizing of the pages, and then another person does the design and another person does the programming, and we all kind of do the project management. But, you know, you never get your way 100%. You kind of want it, but you never really get it. And so you fight for it the best you can, and you know, at the end of the day, you know that the team all worked on it together, and you get to look at it and see the end result and say, you know what, it is okay. I didn't have to get my way on everything. And I think that's the way it should be in city council too. You fight your point, you make your point, and you move on, and you don't hold grudges, and you just move forward, and you do the best you can for your constituents and for the city.
Burke?
It's a great question. You know, in my work and in my life, I have taken an inclusive and integrated approach to solving problems. I was regional administrator for workforce development for the Department of Employment and Economic Development for four years, and my territory was the seven-county metro. And I can tell you, it was fairly contentious having the state and the counties and the city agree on anything. And so from that experience, I have become more and more skilled at building trust in relationships that lead to effective collaborations, the kind of collaboration that Erin has mentioned that she has to contend with all the time as an educator. So I've learned how to work effectively across systems to listen carefully and respectfully and then make tough decisions, and hopefully there's an alignment and an agreement that is effective in the long run. Thanks.
Laurel?
Well, I'll just mention that I have been a member of the city staff for the past few years in my role, working backstage at the Sheldon. So I've had occasion to meet quite a few members of the city staff in the HR department and in the offices here at City Hall, and even some of the Public Works employees who I've worked with through my work at the Sheldon. And I've had really great experiences with all of them. I haven't met one that was not professional, who didn't really care about their work. I, you know, can't imagine that I would meet one who I haven't met yet who didn't have those qualities. And also, I would say that all of the people up here who are running for city council really care about Red Wing and really respect each other, I think. We seem to have all had really positive interactions, and I think we all have enough respect and care for our community that we'll be able to get along with each other even when we disagree. And that it is on us as council representatives, as leaders, to set the tone for that. And I feel confident that everybody up here is capable of that.
Ted?
Set a positive working relationship. I certainly agree, setting the tone, that's really the, the council should be the one to do that, should be respectful of staff as well as fellow council members. When you get into a discussion on policy, you make your points, you look for some compromise that will bring somebody else along and then make it part of their, you know, their process too, that they got something out of it. You know, for 14 years on the Goodyear County Board of Commissioners, we got along quite well, we were quite collegial, we certainly had our differences, you know, widespread and so on. Many of you probably remember Richard Samuelson from Cannon Falls. Richard and I, I loved Richard, but we sat next to each other for most of that time. And I remember there's a particular item came up, and Richard didn't think that it was being funded well enough to the point that he was going to vote no on it. And I thought there was too much money going into it, so I was going to vote no. And so final vote came down and it was three to two. I leaned over to Richard and I said, you know, Richard, if we just got one more vote, we'd have won that.
Becky, it took us a while to get around back to you again, but Becky?
Could I have you repeat the question, please?
The council has been without full representations for months. How would you work with your fellow members in the city staff and city officials to maintain a positive working relationship ensuring all residents are guaranteed representation?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that so far, what I've seen from city council recently is a lot of collegiality, a lot of, we may agree to disagree at times, but some real respect for each other's opinions and asking some really difficult questions. As far as representation goes, I think it's really important that we are open and available to the constituents, anybody in the resident, any of the residents in the community of Red Wing. I respect that the staff, the city staff, has a lot of expertise in their area, and I value that a lot. That doesn't mean that I take that, those questions blindly, or I take their answers blindly. It means I'm still obligated to do my own due diligence, to do my own research. But I think that starting with city staff and their area of expertise is a really good place to start and have that open dialogue. And I think coming into city council meetings and meeting with each other and going in there with an open mind, being informed, being educated, but you're going to come in with an open mind. Recently, I was on a different board meeting, and I went in there with a really strong opinion about something, and we sat down there and we had this great conversation, and at the end of the, our time together, I walked out feeling really comfortable with the decision that we had as a group made. It wasn't the position I was going in with, but I listened to their opinions and they made really sound, sound arguments for it. And I think that that really represents what you want in a city council member, is where you're really willing to hear the input and be open to the other perspectives.
Thank you. Ralph? Wow, I did it again, didn't I?
Yep.
We'll move on to the next question and come back to you in a little while, Ralph. Dean, this question goes to you first. What specific policies would you propose to increase the supply of affordable housing, including rental housing?
Well, we're actually looking at that right now. Like I said, it's one that I think that if we do the TIF on Monday, part of that TIF is going to be starting after, I think it's year three, part of that TIF is going to be put away for other housing projects. So when something comes up, we actually would have money to do, most of that would get implemented through the HRA, but I think that was one policy that we've already done. It seems like when these housing projects, big housing projects come through, they always have trouble with financing, whether it be just for the land or just for this portion of it. If we have that, a pot of money that was actually set aside just for housing, we'd be able to help that project go forward. I think that's really one of the best ideas. I really also like to make sure that we're using local help. If we can find builders that are local, their payrolls are local, their employees are local, that really helps boost our economy inside the city limits too. That would be the two biggest things that I would look for.
Erin?
Can you repeat, sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I wasn't confusing it all in my, sorry about that. What specific policies would you propose to increase the supply of affordable housing, including rental housing?
Well, city council's already looking at the TIF financing, and I also was speaking with someone about this, about making it easier for people to rent out rooms in their homes, to create programs where if you wanted to rent a room in your house, that it would be, the zoning would be easier to achieve that. And really don't have any other specific plans, I'm still researching that option. As a renter myself, this is a concern of mine, because the fewer available units, the more my rent goes up. And so this would be something I would focus on, on city council. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Yeah, this is clearly a huge issue for us here. I tried to find a place to live eight years ago myself, and there was not, there was not one there for me at all. I mean, so I felt the pain of this myself. I did finally find one, obviously, but I think we need to sit down with the builders and all the involved parties in the building of houses and figure out why they're not building, and whatever the answers are, go from there. And, you know, whether it's, and not just building affordable housing, brand new, but taking some of the older houses that could be refurbished, what kind of incentives can we offer people to get those houses refurbished so that somebody can affordably rent them or purchase them? And then, yeah, I know that the TIF is going on right now, it was a needed tool for that, but I think there are other ways we can be creative. Maybe we could work with, do, I don't know, just throwing out an idea, do two-year promotion where there's a reduced, where the fees aren't quite as high to build something new. But being creative is what I would suggest, we do something different than we've done before, because we are in desperate need right now.
Burke?
Thank you. Well, I think that housing is a priority for the economic stability and growth of the city. In terms of this being a tight housing market, I think the current tax increment financing that's being offered with the local developer is a really good beginning. I think that we need a strategy for mixed-use housing, one that is an integrated approach to the people that we would be serving. I would like to know what businesses' needs are for workforce housing. I was told recently that there were approximately 1,000 job openings in the city, and that a lot of the lack of ability to fill those jobs was tied to housing. That's serious, and so before I would recommend any particular policies, I would like to speak with the leaders of large, small and medium-sized businesses here to say, what are your workforce housing needs? And make sure that we, as a council, we're developing a strategy to address that need. I think incentives to improve rental housing would be a really important approach. I think holding rental housing to a certain standard would also be a service to the residents of those rental units. And so I guess to pull this together, I would just say I would take an integrated approach, talking to businesses to find out their demand and need to fill jobs that are tied to housing. I would look specifically, oh, sorry, at rental housing. And address the tight housing market because of growth that is needed here tied to housing. Thanks.
Thank you. Laurel?
I also support the use of the TIF financing for the housing developments that are currently being brought through the process. I'd also like to explore more incentives to fixing up the housing that is in Red Wing that needs some work to be brought up to standards. And I'd like to look at more programs to explore incentives for building houses by individuals who might want to, you know, design their own house and buy a lot and build a house, and why isn't more of that happening? We don't just need to rely on big, you know, big developments to fulfill our housing needs, we can also focus more on smaller projects, on individual lots in Red Wing to try to fill in some of those holes, and I would like to see more of that happen as well.
Ted?
Special policies. If you want to impact the housing market, it's not easy. But one of the things that impacts housing market, of course, would be lower taxes. So that's not easy for the city to do, lower taxes to increase housing, because then I know you have to look at what can the city spend its money on. There's a little bit of difference, we're spending TIF on affordable housing, which part of that would be subsidized housing, which is fine, but I would not want the city to use up all its TIF or extend itself on TIF without also making TIF available to private builders so that we could build market-rate housing. We need housing for laborers, people that have a full-time job, they're making so much money, they're not going to be able to apply for any subsidy, but they still need housing. And so TIF is one of them, low taxes is the other one. We need a central point, so when a builder comes to town or a builder in town wants to do something, there's not a whole bunch of red tape. There's a central point, they'll go to this person, they will step you through all the processes you need to get your thing up and running. You don't have to go to the county to get this and come back here to get that and go to the state to get that. We need a central point to make it easy for builders to get going. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky?
So just to make clear a couple of things, so we have, we've been using the phrase TIF, which is the tax increment financing. And so as Dean mentioned, that is a 250, the one that he mentioned, that the city council's recently approved prior to me stepping on city council, though I fully support it. It's a 250-unit plan that has both affordable market, so under-market value and at-market value, so it's a mix of that. It also, part of that 250 units is 100 units that serves seniors as well. I like that plan because it meets a lot of the needs of Red Wing, provides a lot of seniors in our area the opportunity, if they're looking for it, to downsize, and that would free up some of our family-sized homes as well. So it's kind of a good domino effect. As Dean mentioned, some of the taxes from that TIF goes into the HRA, the Housing Redevelopment Authority. And so I'd like to see, as far as policies go, I'd really like to see us working with neighborhoods. It was mentioned a little bit as well. There are perhaps some grant opportunities, working with neighborhoods, seeing what are options, what are things available? A lot of cities already have some structures like this, I did some of this research over the summer, that have plans on how they work with neighborhoods. The leaders of those neighborhoods already know where there are spots and openings for more housing in their neighborhoods. And I think that with that HRA, we could probably provide some grants or some funding to support some of that development in those neighborhoods.
Thank you. Ralph?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all the other comments about TIF and zoning, those are all important issues. But one of the major policies that hasn't been talked about yet tonight is working with HRA. HRA recently has adopted an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's an important piece, they're getting it off the ground, and I would support putting more dollars into that Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Many people don't understand, but HRA also has a first-time homebuyer's application where you can basically get a zero-interest 30-year loan to help you assist in your first-time homebuyer. This is a hugely important piece. They don't get a lot of applications, I don't think it's well-marketed, but that is, those are a couple of policies that really the council can continue to support. Most of the housing should be done through the HRA, they're the ones that know this stuff, they get money from the state and federal areas as well, but that Affordable Housing Trust Fund really needs additional dollars.
Thank you. Move on to the next question, and we'll start with Erin. Two combined here regarding climate change and renewable energy use. In a recent survey of Red Wing residents, a significant number thought that global climate change or global warming should be recognized by the city and its actions or policies. What specific policies would you support to address that or to increase the use of renewable energy in the city, both by the city itself and by its residents?
That was a long one.
So what specific policies would you support to increase the use of renewable energy to address climate issues, to do that in the city, by the city or by the residents?
First of all, I think we need to look at the burner and the emissions that it's putting off. The levels of lead it's emitting into our air are disturbing, to say the least, and I would also speak with the Sustainability Commission about this, they're the experts. So I would collaborate with them to see what options they suggest. Climate change is very real, and we need to look at that. We need to address that at a city level because we can't, we can't always depend on our state and federal governments to do so. Thank you.
Stephanie?
I think that one of the, a great step toward that is, is, I just lost, what was it? Okay, so I think that the solar gardens are, I support that as one thing, and then single sort, that's the word I was looking for. Single sort recycling is, I am looking forward, you know, to us having single sort recycling, so I support that. They just approved the new car charging station, a test, a beta test, and I think that's a good way to start with that. There's only going to be a couple of them, but I do, I mean, it's already been decided, but that's coming forward, and I do support that. And I do support initiatives, and I think this And I do support initiatives, and I think the Sustainability Commission is doing a good job, and I would rely on a lot of their, you know, recommendations.
Burke?
It's a big loaded question. I believe that our sustainable future depends on us as a city making smart decisions about food, water, and energy. And that's totally tied to renewable energy. Although I love the fact that there are eagles roosting here from January through March because the water stays warm, because it's downstream from the nuclear power plant, I don't think that's the best benefit that I'd like to recognize. But more importantly, I believe that Minnesota has many businesses that are leading the frontier on clean energy and renewable energy in solar and in wind, and in many other aspects. I believe there's new technology that is assisting farmers in better understanding how they can be prepared for the unpredictability of climate change. Because we are surrounded by farms, which is something I love about Goodyear County, I would suggest that we convene our farmers to talk about, ask them to tell us how they are being impacted by climate change. And I believe there's tremendous gravity to this. And listen to them and develop some policies that support their sustainability. Because as far as I'm concerned, the agriculture that surrounds Goodyear, that surrounds us in Goodyear County is as critical to us as the well-being of our city's economy.
Thank you. Laurel?
Yeah, I agree with everything that's already been stated about more sustainable energy and working on our environment. Energy isn't the only thing that our community is going to be affected by with climate change. One of the things that we're likely to see happen is more and different kinds of storm damage. And I would really want to take a look at our city's storm mitigation plans and make sure that we're prepared for more and heavier storm damage like we've seen the past couple of weeks. The city's already been doing a great job with managing those events, but I would want to make sure that we're staying up to date on all of those things and being prepared for the different changes that we might see coming our way in the future.
Ted?
For climate change, for policies for renewable energy, you know, I think we would look to the federal and the state, as long as they're providing incentives that don't impact our levy and our taxes quite so much, that we would go ahead with some of those plans. But mostly, I would look to private industry to actually solve much of our problem because they're the ones that have to make every cent count. And so I think as we move forward in our society, private industry is going to prevent, provide more and more efficient tools and ways to produce energy and ways to get around and so on. So my policy is to let private enterprise lead the way to a more efficient world.
Becky?
So several years ago, I was on the Sustainability Commission, and I was recently on it again. And as I mentioned at the beginning, I teach eighth through 12th grade science, so climate change is something that's dear near to me, and it's been a big part of my interest for a long time. So on the Sustainability Commission, one of the things that we talked about, as was mentioned, the EV charging station, I'm glad to see that the city council was able to pass that and get that through. I'm excited about that because I think that the city can be a leader. We've already received awards for our green steps and for the things that we have done that have led this community or been a leader with other communities. I'd like to see with that charging station, I know that there'll be some conversation about electrical fleet vehicles within our city. Like the solar garden, there are opportunities for us to cut costs by doing things that are good for our community, good for our environment. And I think that those opportunities are fantastic. I also think that the city can be a leader just by educating others. So as Stephanie mentioned, on things like single sort, I think is a fantastic idea. And that's primarily funded through grants. So again, another really, really great opportunity for us to do something that's great for climate change and still works within our budget. We can lead the city residents by educating them about ways to recycle or ways to reduce. I know the Sustainability Commission, again, is working on educating residents about how to reduce their electricity bills, which is a great win for them, and it's a great win for the environment as well. So lots of opportunities for us.
Thank you. Ralph?
Yeah, relative to climate change, I think the city has been leading in that area for well over a decade. The Green Steps Sustainability Program has been out there for quite a while. We've been involved in that for a long time. Recently, the big buzzwords now are the community solar gardens. But before that, you look, look right next door here in, at the solar panels in the, basically in the carport next to us. Okay, this is all done years ago before community gardens. So the city has goals on reducing their carbon footprint and has had goals for at least a decade. I can't tell you exactly what they are, but I'll go find out. But the city really has been involved in that. One of the other things with the EV discussion we just had recently at city council is having the city actually looking at its own fleet of vehicles and move some of those vehicles into electric vehicle option as well. So the city will continue to look at those options and move forward to reduce our carbon footprint.
Dean?
It was about 12 years ago, I think we put our first LED street light in, then we bought a hybrid car. We started putting up solar panels long before it was fashionable to put solar panels up. And I don't think, other than the actual infrastructure and this, people were, there was company, private industry was out there paying us to put these up for them. And then at the end of a certain term, we get, the city gets them for free. We've got them at the waste campus, we have them on, out here, we have them on the fire department. And I believe, and then we got a really, really super-good deal that's going to save about $25 million over the next, or excuse me, about $12 million over the next 25 years with the solar garden. And I believe at the end of this year, where all of the city of Red Wing's electricity is going to be 100% renewable. That was, that was the city's goal. And having renewable energy also saves the taxpayer a lot of money over the next 25 years. Some of the things that we're looking at down the road are the businesses, we've already set that as one of the parameters for the 1916 building, 1916 property, that all of the, any building that gets built there gets solar-ready. That's, that's part of the conditions for building in that property. And matter of fact, I was there, I was out in Washington when we got the award for the green, green cities. We didn't get it until, they actually awarded it to me, but they didn't have the award yet. So it was an interesting deal. But I think, oh, my time, all right, thank you. I could have went on for a long time on that one.
I expect you could. Thank you. We're going to have one more question. It's going to be a quick, quick one, given our time constraints, before we go to the closing statements. But I would just like to thank the audience for submitting their questions. We did not get to all of your questions, I'm sorry. There were a bunch of good questions, and we had to make choices. So thank you again for all of your active participation and for coming tonight. So to the candidates, and we will start with Stephanie first. And I would just add, so this is moderator's sort of choice here of asking you to do this quickly so we can have plenty of time for the closing comments. So a simple yes/no answer and maybe a statement or two, but not more than 30 seconds. So if we could limit this to not more than 30 seconds, and we'll move on to the next one. Do you support the designation of Red Wing as a sanctuary city? Stephanie?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes. Si se puede.
Yes.
No, and because the mayor was out in Washington, he said, talking to ICE people, and said, if you make, city makes it a sanctuary city, ICE says, well, there's a place we should be going.
Becky?
Yes.
Ralph?
Maybe. I don't know enough about what it means to be a sanctuary city. I would need to do a lot more research before I decide.
Dean?
Mine's going to be a maybe too, and I, the same reason, I haven't done enough research on this, but I've heard that there is a lot of issues that come along with being a sanctuary city. And so, and then you become a target of ICE. And I, I just don't know what the right answer is yet without doing some more research.
Erin?
Because if you are a sanctuary city, you're telling the federal government that they cannot come in and utilize your city taxpayer-funded law enforcement to do the federal government's work. So it, becoming a sanctuary city would actually save us money in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you to the candidates, and we'll close with your closing statements, and we'll begin with Burke. And so a minute and a half, same timing as the rest, and you're free to make any comments you'd like. Burke?
Thank you all for coming tonight. It's been a pleasure being here. I bring 40 years of experience. It's a very diverse background, from owning my own small business to being a teacher, living in rural communities, living in other countries, speaking another language. And I believe that I am an accessible and thoughtful decision-maker who has developed strategies for attracting and retaining young people and families. And basically, speaking to the needs of a community because I have lived in many rural communities and have been very actively engaged, just like this community has a lot of residents who are actively engaged. I like to jump in with both feet, find out what's going on, how can I serve, and how can I make a difference? I believe that I can make a difference as somebody who has developed inclusive and integrated strategies for sustainable futures. And I would particularly like to reach out to community members in Ward Four, my neighbors in Ward Four, to ask for your vote for Burke Murphy for Ward Four. Thank you all.
Thank you. Laurel?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and for all of the great questions. I really learned a lot tonight from listening to everyone's answers. I'm new to the political and city government arena. This has been a real growth opportunity for me. Thank you all for participating in that and coming in on this journey with me. I hope that you'll consider voting for me. I intend to bring fresh eyes and new perspectives to the council if I'm elected. And thank you all for considering voting for me. Laurel Stidson for At-Large.
Ted?
Thank you again to everybody that came at the League for hosting it. I'm Ted Seifert. I've lived in Red Wing for 42 years. I've been involved in the community. For 14 years, I was on the county board. I'm quite intimately knowledgeable about how, you know, government works and so on. For 30 years, I and my wife have run a small business. I guess it's not really so small because at times we've had over 200 employees, the Hayawatha Home Care. This is a great community, and certainly wouldn't want to do anything that would, that would change its character a whole lot. So, you know, I think that we need to be very respectful of the people, the levels of people that live here. You know, we have some people who are quite well-off, and we have some people that struggle every day, and we need to be watching out for those. We need a safety net, we need to help those folks, and we, we're going to have a very nice, very nice community here. So I'm Ted Seifert, Ward Three. Please vote for Ted Seifert, November 6th. Thank you.
Becky?
Thank you, League of Women Voters, and thank you, everybody, for coming out your questions, and thank you, Jerry, as well. So I think that the biggest thing that I'm excited about running for is, I think I ask myself all the time, is how can I make this community better? I love Red Wing, I said that before. It was, I can tell you the very moment when I realized that, when I was out on the river and, and somebody said, oh, it's not such a bad place to raise a kid. And I stopped for a second and looked around, and I was like, this is an excellent place to raise my son. And ever since then, I think my heart has really been here in Red Wing. And so I ask myself all the time, how can I make this place a better place? And part of that is being on the Sustainability Commission, part of that is volunteering in the community. What I hope to bring to the city council is finding that balance. I know that we need to make this an affordable place to live, but I know that we need places where we can invest in it. I'm happy to see some of the opportunities for that infrastructure, but there are a lot of underrepresented groups in this community that, that need a voice as well. And I think that we need to not just say no, but we need to say, how can we? And we need to get creative about that. Things like, I'm really proud of the things like the solar garden. That's a really, really creative way to say, we can do something that suits our community and reduces our expenses in that area and makes it a better place to live. And I know that I can bring that. So Norton for Red Wing for Ward Three. Thank you.
Ralph?
Yes, again, thank you to the League, and thank you, Jerry, as well, for moderating tonight. I've been volunteering at the city here for 13 years in the civic, in the civic arena. I've been very honored to represent Red Wing, regionally, at the state level, and also at the national level. It's been a great honor to represent all of you. I'm passionate, I'm focused on the future. I've always say, let's do things today to give us options for tomorrow. That's, for me, that's the most important thing I can do, you know, is provide options for the next council and options for the next generation as well. Focus on them and take care of yourself. I'm experienced, I've got a lot of knowledge, and I really believe that matters. We've got a young council right now, so experience matters, it's important. My priority will be really working on the housing issue. Affordable housing, workforce housing, market-rate housing is our biggest issue we have within the city. I'm here to listen to the constituents. I encourage them to get involved in the board and commission process. Board and commissions have, usually have a lot of public forums, opportunities to speak, and wish people would take more advantage of that and advocate for their positions. So again, well for Ralph Roderickis, At-Large. See you all on November 6th. Thanks.
Dean?
Well, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters again, and also for the audience that's been, and the folks at home that are watching. I'm not big on real-long speeches unless you're talking about the climate change and, you know, solar energy and stuff like that. I just want to say, you know, we've done a lot over the years, we've done a lot together. I think we can do a lot more in the future, and I ask for your vote on November 26th. Thank you.
November 6th is the election.
Excuse me. The sixth.
Just so everybody's clear.
There had to have been somebody to make, to make the audience laugh tonight.
Besides the moderator.
That's right, you did too.
Erin?
All right. I want to thank everyone for attending tonight, and thank you for the League of Women Voters for putting this on. It is a great exercise in democracy. I know I'm not the most experienced person up here, but at the end of the day, it's not about me. I said this at the last forum. This election is about you and who you want to represent you on city council. It doesn't matter how much money you make or who your family is, it doesn't matter your level of education. You deserve a voice on city council. It doesn't matter what church you go to or don't go to, it doesn't matter if you moved here yesterday, or if you've lived here your whole life. You deserve someone on city council that listens to you and is willing to stand up for you and make waves if necessary. I hope you'll vote for me on November 6th, and thank you for coming again. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to Jerry, who did a very good job moderating, and for everybody who came and spent your time participating tonight. There's been a lot of good questions. I'm a little sad about the chicken one, but, you know. I'm in love. It was a ringer. It was. Anyway, the reason, the reason that I've been a Girls on the Run coach, when I don't have a little girl, I never did, I only had a boy, but the reason I volunteer and the reason I help businesses with their websites, and the reason that I work at the hockey rink and volunteer there, and the reason that I do that is because I love this city. And that's why I'm running for city council. I think that we could use a fresh voice. And so if you agree that we could use a fresh voice, I encourage you to vote for me for city council. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you to the candidates. (applause)
Thank you to the candidates. Thank you to the candidates, the audience, the League members, and the City of Red Wing staff for tonight's candidate forum for Red Wing City Council candidates. I invite you to learn more about the League of Women Voters and consider joining. Information is available in the lobby. Please consider this your call to action and vote either early or on Election Day, November 6th.
6th, November 6th.